Good evening. Welcome to their Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, August 26th. The time is 6:31, and I would like to call this meeting to order. If you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Lavelle, if I can ask you to call the roll, please?
Mr. Doring?
Here.
Ms. Passeretti?
Here.
Mrs. Reynes? Dr. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Regan?
Here.
Dr. Roscoe?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mrs. Risaci?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Eight members present and voting.
Thank you so much. Item number four on our agenda is our Student Board Representatives, who we don't have with us here as we are finishing up the summer session, but I really look forward to welcoming them to our next meeting and seeing who our representatives will be in our September meeting. We do not have any presentation and awards. We are moving right along this evening. And I do not see anyone for a public comment, but I will just ask, is there anyone here for public comment? There is no one, so we are able to move through the public comment item in the agenda. Before we move to our consent agenda, I would just like to ask, does any board member have anything that they would like removed from the consent agenda? Not seeing anything. I would like to make a motion to accept consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.6. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Mrs. Passeretti, I would like to give this to you for our correspondence. We are moving quickly this evening.
This is great. It's a red letter day. Thank you, Dr. Roscoe. I have two items that I would like to read into the record as far as correspondence. The first is a donation of a water slide. It's not for Central Office, Mr. Votto. That's what happens when you speak under your breath. It's a donation for a water slide for Special Education Summer School, and this has been received from a Matthew Somac. I'm hoping I'm pronouncing your last name correctly. And again, the donation is to the Special Education Department. I presume, Ms. Turner, that the students have had a chance to...
Yes, they had an absolute blast on it. They spent the day doing water activities with it. It was very generous of him.
Awesome, and we do thank him for that. Glad it went to good use. And next time, maybe invite the board for a slide down the water slide.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Votto would like to be the first one down the slide. That's what he just muttered under his breath. And the second item is another very generous donation from Christopher Peronski, and it is a value of $2,500. The donation will be going to an account called Families in Need, Families in Need, which is a school counseling activity account. And I'd like to read, if allowed here, I'd like to read the thank you note that Mr. Zacco wrote to Mr. Peronski, dated July 24th, 2024. Dear Mr. Peronski, thank you again for your generous donation to Mark T. Sheehan High School. Your gift will be deposited into the Families in Need account. Funds from this account assist other families who are experiencing significant financial hardships. Because of your kind support, we are able to make a positive difference in their lives. On behalf of our student body and staff, thank you again for your gracious support. Very truly yours and so Zacco Principal, Mark T. Sheehan High School. So again, from all of us, we thank you for your generous donation. And I will turn it back to Dr. Roscoe at this time.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Passeretti. And I know a lot of committees are not meeting during the summer, but Mr. Ross, did the ACES committee meet?
Yes, they did. Yes, they did, and they went over some of the building plans and staffing, and they discussed the TV advertising campaign that they're running, which is apparently very successful for them for ACES over in Waterbury. And that was basically it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ross. Mr. Deering, your CAPE report?
Things have been pretty busy with CAPE over the summer. There have been a series of webinars about school finance. There was also recently a webinar about the new cellphone guidance coming out of the State Board of Education. All of the replays of the webinar are available on the CAPE website. If anybody's struggling to access them, just let me know. I'd be happy to help you find them. CAPE also recently hosted its full-day conference over the summer, a couple of weeks ago. I have all the slide decks and all the handouts from the conference. If anyone's interested, let me know. I'd be happy to give them to you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Deering. Lot of great information always coming out of CAPE, especially around some of the new legislation. Item number 11 on our agenda is old business. We do not have any at this time. And next, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session with the Board of Education members, the superintendent, Mr. Thompson, for the purpose of discussing some resignations. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. We are in executive session. Moving right along to item number 13 on our agenda, looking at the Instructional Committee. Mr. Votto and Dr. Reed, I'll pass this over to you.
All right, we have to approve the following resignations. I make a motion at the Board of Education to accept the resignation of Diane Sumter, effective June 30th, 2024. Diane Sumter has been a world language teacher since August of 2020.
I second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. I make a motion at the Board of Education to accept the resignation of Laura Nolan, effective June 30th, 2024. Laura Nolan has been a world language teacher since September 2022.
A second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I make a motion at the Board of Education to accept the resignation of Jeremy Walz, effective June 30th, 2024. Jeremy Walz has been a social studies teacher since August of 2014.
Second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I make a motion at the Board of Education to accept the resignation of Jamie Murphy, effective June 30th, 2024. Jamie Murphy has been a preschool teacher since August of 2015.
Second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I make a motion at the Board of Education to accept the resignation of Amanda Doran, effective June 30th, 2024. Amanda Doran has been a special education teacher since August of 2022.
Second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I make a motion at the Board of Education to accept the resignation of Hassan Burris, effective June 30th, 2024. Hassan Burris has been a science teacher since August of 2022.
I second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I make a motion at the Board of Education to accept the resignation of Liza Kennedy, or Lisa Kennedy, effective June 30th, 2024. Liza was hired as an elementary teacher in August of 2006, and then became an interventionist in January of 2011.
Second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I make a motion at the Board of Education to accept the resignation of Christie Mailer, effective June 30th, 2024. Christie Mailer was hired as an English teacher in 2021. She was also an English teacher for Wallingford Public Schools from 2007 through 2015, November of 2015.
Second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I make a motion at the Board of Education to accept the resignation of Fabiola Puglisi, effective June 30th, 2024. Fabiola Puglisi was hired as a world language teacher in August of 2023.
Second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And that's it. Mrs. Chairperson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Votto and Dr. Reed. Moving to item number 14, our Operations Committee. Mrs. Regan and Mrs. Reynes.
Thank you. There was no operations meeting in August, but I do have our tuition rates. I don't know if anyone wants to discuss those. We do have the memo, but I'll just make the motion if anyone wants to talk about it.
I have just one question.
Sure.
I sort of lost track of it, but does anyone know if the legislation passed to remove the cap on the tuition rates?
Passed it.
Did not pass? It did not pass? Okay, I didn't know if that had anything to do with increased cost. All right, then I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that the board accept the tuition rates for 2024 to 2025, as outlined in the memo dated August 26, 2024. Can I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Regan and Mrs. Reynes. Now, we are looking to you, Superintendent Belizzi, so if you can give us your administrative report. Thank you so much.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Before I get started on that, I just want to acknowledge a few donations that we received. These are... The first one is a violin and violin case from Mrs. Donna Regan, our Board of Education member. It is valued at $178, and it will go to Dag Hamerschold Middle School. So thank you very much. We appreciate that. The next one I have is miscellaneous school office supplies. This is from an anonymous donor. It went to Highland James H. Moran Middle School and Mark T. Sheehan High School in the value of $225. So we thank that donor for these supplies as well. And lastly, we have a donation of snacks for the staff and backpacks for students. And this was received from... It went to Dag Hamerschold Middle School, and it was received from Elevate Life Church. So we say thank you very much. And it says, from our principal there, "On behalf of Dag Hamerschold Middle School, I'm writing to say thank you for your generous gift of backpacks and the variety of snacks provided. Your kind gesture is greatly appreciated and will be a nice welcome for the back to schools for staff and teachers. It was a pleasure working with you this summer during the construction of your new facility. We wish you well in your future endeavors." Thank you for the generous gift. So to share some things on our updates, I know we have a couple of things we kind of want to talk about today, so feel free to kind of ask me as we're going through. Today, to get started, we did welcome back our staff today. So it was our first day of professional development. As you recall, we have three days that our staff come back. This week, today was the first day. Thursday is the first day of school for us, for all students in grades K through 12. And then next Wednesday, September 6th, will be the first day for preschool students. Last week, just to share, we had... I'm sorry, excuse me. On Friday, August 16th, we had new teacher orientation. We welcomed in, at that point, eight new teachers. And that new teacher academy, we introduced them to our procedures, our expectations. Community partners were able to come in and speak. They got some curricular information. And it was a wonderful time. They're very excited to join our team, and we're looking forward to having them with us in our buildings as well. This past week, last week, Monday through Friday, we had our professional development retreat for our administrators. So we did five days of half-days for each day for our administrators. And we had a different workshop every day. We had Sarah Gleason from Shipman &amp; Goodwin come in to present updates on Title IX regulations and changes in legislation for the educational laws that impact us as we start the school year. We had Police Officer Henry Cadet come in, talk to us and the administrating staff on safety and security measures and updates on our drills and things going forward for this year. We also covered topics like teacher and administrator evaluation, school improvement plans, department improvement plans, protocols for reviewing data. So it was a nice collaborative week. It was a nice mix of... We gave them breakfast and lunch every day. We had an opportunity for them to meet with their colleagues and to plan in the afternoon. So it was a very nice day to welcome them back and be able to start off the school year. Moving forward, I did want to just share, in addition, a couple of updates, and I know Mr. Deptula will kind of chime in as I go through just a couple of things. The first thing I'll start off with is the Lyman Hall High School boilers. So last Tuesday, Mr. Barone and I were here for the approval of the bonding to bond the Lyman Hall boilers. So we currently have two boilers, and they are bonding three, which will be 30 days before we can go ahead and order them. But we appreciate that from Town Council and the mayor as well. So we're looking forward to that for this current year. Another thing I know that has been up for discussion and people are aware of is our lawn company. So last week, Mr. Deptula and I received a letter from our lawn company making us aware of the fact that they do no longer have the manpower to be able to continue to fulfill the contract with us from now through the end of this term, because we're going to end up going out to bid. So we have been working with the Town Purchasing Department, and I spoke with the mayor a few times regarding this to see if there were other available lawn service companies that could come in and help support us. We typically only have in-house two lawn mowers, and so we were able to have one of our staff members come in on Sunday to help out. And I know Mr. Deptula had some of his staff help out today with cutting some of the lawns. Last Friday, we had Mr. Corso and a teacher from the ASTE help out with cutting the grass on Friday so that it would look ready to go before everyone came back. I believe that was Pat Cannellin who helped him. And then today, I received more pictures from Lyman Hall with Mrs. Holt and Ken Daly also helping out with cutting the grass and picking up all the branches and everything in the back. So we do appreciate everyone chipping in and all of our staff helping out. The good news is, after talking to Town Purchasing today, it looks like we will have a company that will be able to come in and help us out. The hope is that they'll be able to start tomorrow, and so then we will be able to have catch-up with what the grass cutting needs to be done and move forward from there, and then maintain it for us throughout the fall. This will be an opportunity then for us to go back out to bid, to look for a new company permanently for the duration of the bid. I did talk to Mrs. Janice Small at Town Hall in regards to them ending the contract so abruptly, and she's going to follow up with them on that end. So there are a couple of things we are pursuing with that. Mr. Deptula, did I miss anything regarding the lawns?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Question, yes.
I missed what you said. Who's doing it now? Or who's going to do it?
Well, we have another company. We're just waiting for it to be finalized for them to start tomorrow.
Oh. So, all right.
Yes.
Now, did the town offer to do any for us?
So I did have conversations with the mayor about that and Sal Amadeo from Purchasing. And if we were unable to find someone today, that was going to be a discussion that he and I were going to have with the mayor.
I meant like the town people who cut grass.
Right, well, that was going to be the conversation we were going to have. Is there any way that the town side could help us out?
Public Works, that's what I meant.
Yes, I knew what you meant. But then it worked out that it looks like we're going to have this company. It's like 99.9%.
I would like to thank our staff that stood up today, and we'll be back at it tomorrow. We had two gentlemen mowing and two gentlemen weed whacking. It's a huge task, way beyond the ability of our department. But these guys stood up and did this for us, and we expect them to do it again tomorrow.
Superintendent Belizzi, I just wanted to say thank you. You beat me to it, Mr. Deptula. Thank you to Superintendent Belizzi, to you, Mr. Deptula. I know that you have been working around the clock on this, and I know that people were feeling like they were maybe a little left in the dark as to what was happening and feeling frustrated by the length of the grass. And so I know on the backside, you were really working so hard. So thank you. And just make sure you please pass along our thanks to all the people who have really stepped up, because with school starting right around the corner, I appreciate that, you know, they want to make the schools look as best as they possibly can. So thank you.
I have one more addition to that. My secretary, Bev Summers, has supplied this company with a spreadsheet every week so they could see what wasn't cut and what they were not getting paid for. And that is... Obviously, that's a big extra duty for her, but we've been doing that every single week.
I have one quick question. They're not... A lot of landscaping companies are also doing winter plowing. They are not our same one for plowing? I hope not.
No, they're not.
Okay, thank you.
Very good question. I confirmed the same thing when this happened. Okay, so I'm going to... Another update I'll give you is for Fairfield Boulevard. So I did talk to Janice Small today, and it looks like we are on the path for then to hopefully close early September sometime. She doesn't have a date yet. So once they do close on that building, then I know Mr. Deptula has a lot of the bids ready to go for us to then start to look into architectural work, vendors coming in, and starting to do some of the work. So once they do have a firm date on closing for that, then we will go ahead and move forward with that. So I just wanted to go ahead and provide an update on that. And then, Mr. Deptula, feel free to jump in as I share some updates on the Mark T. Sheehan track and turf and the drainage. Last Thursday, Mr. Deptula and I and Mr. Dave Bryant met with SLR. We met with two members from there and their civil engineer for about, I would say, two and a half hours to walk the entire track and turf and to look at all of the wetlands, where the water drains, to from. They pulled up all the manhole covers, and we had an opportunity to look to see if there was still water in there or not. And they are going to be giving us some written recommendations as to things that they see. Just to share some of the preliminary things that were discussed and recommendations that they had made, they had asked that we go back and inspect all of the pipes again and run the cameras through again just to make sure that nothing is blocked. We had an extensive discussion about the wetlands that are there and the fact that the water table is pretty high there. There's a lot of vegetation there. And so as the water is draining that way, it is not, you know, draining as well as we had hoped and starting to pool. The other thing we talked about was the baseball field up at the top and how the water is draining down from the baseball field onto the track and the turf. And so there was a lot of discussion around looking at potentially diverting that water so that it does not go right onto the track and the turf. Mr. Deptula, did I miss anything in terms of other things they had recommended for us at this time?
The one thing that we did discover, the eastern outflow, which was where we had the major clog before, there are some roots back into that pipe. There's a... The closest tree is a weeping willow. And they... I'm not so sure how those roots form or how they can get that far away, but we're going to clean that out again. And if necessary, we may excavate that pipe and replace it. I feel comfortable with replacing the pipe. It's only... It's 50 or 60 feet of pipe. But there is... I see a noticeable difference because I was there before, during, and after all of this, I had eyes on it. I'm the only one that was there that day that did. But I see a difference. The water level in that outflow structure is a little higher than it was then. So that's something we can do right now. It's not anything that's expensive, but we are going to clear that pipe.
We did confirm with them as well that the water on the turf and the track will not invalidate the warranty that we have on the turf and the track. We did have an extensive talk and discussion about that. And then the last thing we are working on in terms of the track and the turf is a second opinion from another civil engineer. So Mr. Deptula has already been in touch with the Purchasing Department, Mr. Amadeo, to discuss whatever specifications are needed for that. But that is something else that we're working on so that we do get another opinion as we're waiting for the report back from last Thursday. And we can also start to work on some of those initial recommendations.
I would just like to thank you, Mrs. Belizzi, for all this hard work that you're doing. I'm following this stuff up. I know it's been an issue. And I'm glad to see you're not giving up. We're going to keep fighting to get this thing settled.
Yes, it was very interesting. I learned a lot in the two and a half hours I was there. I had to keep asking them to, okay, simplify that, please. But it was very thorough. We really... They really did look at everything and consider every possibility. And so I think it's really important that we continue to do that. We look at their recommendations, and then we do get a second opinion.
Again, thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. I know this has been frustrating for everyone. I'm just curious, only because I used to be on the Inland Wetlands Commission. Has Erin O'Hare and the other inland wetland commissioners... She's not a commissioner. She works here in Town Hall, but it doesn't matter. Have they been part of the conversation at all? I'm just curious what the inland wetlands folks, you know, the people that are... You know, they're appointed to take care of our wetlands.[1669.13] know, they're appointed to take care of our wetlands, if they've had anything to say about it?
So they regulate it, but they can't offer any assistance. They won't offer design work or specifications. That's up to us. The property is ours, and it's our right and our responsibility to clear that out. We are looking to some other departments for some possible assistance. We would like to vacuum excavate the wetlands if possible. That way, we disturb less, less of it and create less of an environmental issue. It's a clean, very effective way of doing it. You're not going to remove any base soils or base elements. You'll just be removing the built-up silt, and that's really all we want to do.
I did, when this started, I did have a conversation with Mayor Savoni regarding this, and left, I had left, last, excuse me, I had left it with him, was that once we received back the paperwork and I know, and we know the scope of the work, then I would follow up with him in regards to the wetlands and determining whether or not it is something that needs an application and a permit for before we move forward with doing any of the work on the wetlands. We'd have to go through that. I do know he was planning on mentioning it to Erin to let her know, but I did leave it with him that as soon as I get that paperwork back, then we'd have a discussion. As Mr. Deptula had discussed, the vacuum trucks and things are not something we have here on our end, on the district side. I believe it is something that the town has, but again, that's something after we have the scope of work that we can have further discussion about that.
Mr. Deptula, but the, the, I mean, Public Works would help us do something there, is that correct? It's not totally our responsibility, is it?
Well, it is our responsibility, but we may look to them for some assistance. Our goal was to put an excavator out there, but it's still so wet that we can't risk that. Our excavating contractor does not want to go out there right now. Early winter, that's a real possibility, but we need, we need much drier conditions and we need firmer terrain for that machine to operate.
So our town doesn't have any of those, that particular machine?
There's vacuum trucks in town, but they're not necessarily used for the purpose that we would like. Typically, water and sewer has a truck, they use it to clean catch basins out, I believe, and I think Public Works, that's also how they use it. Typically, you know, they don't, they have one length of hose to fit to a catch basin. They don't have a hundred feet of hose like we would need. We did ask them earlier this year if they could help with removal of the sand from the pool filters, and Public Works was not able to oblige us then because, again, they only have one length of hose to make catch basins. The filters are a hundred and fifty feet away from the nearest door.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, wait your turn, Mr. Vado. It's okay. I just want to kind of clarify something. So first of all, it sounds like the issue is mainly because of the pipes and the wetlands and not because of the drainage of the field, correct?
That's correct.
And it's, because I just, I get worried that people think that we could, that that field will drain instantaneously, which it's not designed to do, because if that were to drain instantaneously, granted, we had, and we also had, what, ten inches of rain last Thursday, putting all of that into wetlands that quickly would not just overpower the wetlands, but if it's, if I'm not mistaken, there are property that abuts that. And so what we're trying to do is create a better stream or a flow of water without flooding out the neighbors.
That's correct.
Okay, I just.
What was one of our biggest concerns through all this, because there are flow control devices that restrict the outflow. The field itself and the turf can drain over a hundred inches of water in an hour, in an hour, not a day, in an hour. Emphasize that, because it's obvious that this is not a problem with the field or the underlayment, it's a problem with site drainage. That whole Sheen property, the drainage comes from Highland and the neighborhood's up behind Highland. I know several years ago, the town of Wallingford had a big push to remove some pumps from the sanitary sewer. Most of those pumps now pump out onto the ground. That creates some issues. This also drains the Highland property and all the plateaus. The first field you come to is the, I think, the softball and then the practice football and then the baseball. This is at the bottom of all of that, and all of that comes down that hillside.
And everything goes into the wetlands, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
It would be nice if we could redirect some of that to another area.
Can you, I have a couple of questions. So, has there been a change to the structure of the field or the elevation of the field from the previous track?
Very, very minor.
Okay, so I think that's probably where the, where people are questioning or concerned because the previous track didn't, the water didn't sit like that on the previous track.
This is built to the new standard, so it's, the old standard is long gone away. They incorporated another degree of pitch or so to the track and put a little bit more of a crown in the field, but that was very rare and minor.
Yeah, because the fields up on top are very, they, although the water goes down, they're usually pretty wet. Like, I know a lot of the parents themselves for baseball would come before the baseball games and dry the fields themselves and bring sand so the kids could play because the field would drain a lot. I'm wondering, how, did, do you know, or did, did the company, did SLR let you know, how many times can the water sit on the track for, say, if it, you know, doesn't drain immediately? Sometimes it's taking ten to twelve hours, say, to drain. How many times can that happen before the track or the turf are compromised?
That's unlimited. That material is made to be underwater on a regular basis. It's rubber, plastic, it's, there's nothing there that soaks up or degrades because of water. Fields degrade mainly because of UV sunlight, you know, UV rays. Unfortunately, that's what makes the field last ten years, you know?
Okay, so sunlight, not puddling or rain, so even though, like, say, on the track, they use spikes when they're running on the bottom of their shoes, there won't be anything compromised related to water pooling on the track?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So, believe it or not, this is not about the track, but I do have a question. Where are we at with the Sheen pool? It was not working, it was maybe fixed, not working again, or is it, where are we at with that?
So, as you know, we dodged that hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar bullet for new sand filters. The filters are only about ten years old, and I couldn't see that we needed new filters. So we took those filters apart. My staff investigated. We found that an air tube to the bottom manifold in each tank had dissolved, and that was allowing the sand to go into the piping system and get shot into the pool. So we put a dollar fifty plug in each one of those and moved on. That was not the end of the story. When you drain down a pool, you create a lot of problems. We try to avoid that, but at the same time, we had to refit Virginia Grand Baker grates, which we did, but when we refilled, we had an opportunity to upgrade the chlorinator, which has been problematic. Anything with chlorine has got a limited lifespan. So I authorized the purchase of a new chlorinator, and then the controller didn't want to operate. When we refilled the pool, we cleaned off the elements, the probes, and we tried to get the chlorinator, the automation piece working, and it would not come back to life. So we now replace that, and everything is operational.
I just, Mr. Deptula, you always sound so knowledgeable about what you're doing. I really, we appreciate, the town appreciates your work with the school system. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question that has nothing to do with the pool and nothing to do with the track?
Absolutely.
Where are we on fixing the part at the Lyman Hall lacrosse field where the balls keep rolling underneath the bleachers because, I guess, a net is broken, net is missing?
There was never, there was never a batter board mounted below those bleachers, so there was an opening underneath where balls could go. We had a fence installed, chain link. That seemed to be the best solution, and the vendor, I was under the impression the vendor was gonna put a bottom support rod across. They didn't do that, they just ran a wire across. So there's still a chance for some balls to go under there. So the plan is to have them put that bottom rod in, at least in probably, probably two-thirds of it. That should stop that ball from going underneath.
Okay.
But yeah, that was the solution. Our groundskeepers seem to like that. If you put a solid piece in there, it gets very, very costly. It was really cost prohibitive. So that's what we did, and we'll be speaking to the fence company to see what else they can do for us. We can also adjust that grade a little bit, but, and that would probably be with just crushed stone process.
And I'm about to out myself when it comes to sports. When is lacrosse season? Have we had a chance to try this out yet, to make sure that?
Well, somebody was already playing lacrosse there, so I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I think it was the field hockey balls, if I'm correct, right? That were, the ones that were rolling underneath?
Yeah, lacrosse starts in the spring.
Field hockey's in the fall.
At least I didn't say hockey, I mean.
That's all year round.
Yes. All right, thank you.
So, Mr. Deptula, just to follow up, that's something that you're actively pursuing, that what I'll call buffer pipe at the bottom?
Yeah, correct.
Now you're really seeing my lack of knowledge about anything maintenance-related, but you're aware and it'll be corrected, so people don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, we're planning on closing up that space. I didn't actually put eyes on that until this morning, but yeah, no, it's, it didn't, it didn't quite have the effect that we were looking for. And this fence company that we deal with has been great. They're a very reputable vendor. We were a little cautious at first, but they've done a great job for the town of Wallingford.
Thank you so much, and thanks for being on top of all of these things. It seems like it's a never-ending list and you're getting through it, so that's much appreciated. Do you have anything else for us, Superintendent Belizzi?
So I think I'm good. I don't know if there were any other questions.
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
I happened to see in the Navegan Register on the front page, an article that many of the schools have been unable to fulfill the requirement of putting feminine hygiene products in the boys' rooms. How are we on that?
So, Mr. Deptula, do you want to chime in? To my understanding, we are in compliance with meeting all of those expectations for the start of the school year, but I'm sure you can speak a little further on that.
I'm not sure if you're aware, but all these, the purchase of all the dispensers was approved last year, and we purchased those because it was approved, and then the, then they decided to change the regulations, but we're all set to go. There's dispensers in every bathroom that requires it. We stock, we will be stocking the middle school dispensers, but all the other dispensers throughout the district will be stocked by the cleaning contractors. It's been in their contract in two schools, and the rest of them, it was added this year.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mrs. Rosaci.
I just wanted to ask, is, do we have, I know it was really recent that the governor came out with some updated guidance on the cell phone usage. Do we have, I'm sure we do have plans to update our policy, but can you just tell me where we are with that?
So currently, the position statement came out, and for the most part, K eight, we're in compliance with the position statement. Our students are free to have a cell phone, but it has to be turned off and out of sight throughout the school day. They're not allowed to have it out during transition times, lunch, or other reasons. At the high school, it is a little bit different. High school, our cell phone policy is very closely aligned in that the students have it, that it's not out for class. We don't, at one school, one school uses a little, like, pocket chart types of things, and then in the other schools, some teachers do that as well, but it's not universal across the school. But at the high school level, kids are allowed to have cell phones not out during class, out during transition and/or at lunch. I'm gonna be honest, I think what a lot of school systems struggle with that level is just the monitoring and the ability to really handle the amount of cell phone use without it completely unraveling your instructional time, right? So I, for one, am interested to see how this plays out as school districts are dealing with it, but for now, the policy committee, I think it was two or three, maybe two years ago, when we redid it, we really felt strongly that at the K eight level, they were removed from sight throughout the school day, and that at the high school, you know, during that passing time, lunchtime, were the only times that we felt that, you know, if kids were going to need to check it, which we know kids do, that was the better time to do it without a disruption to the instruction taking place in the classroom. So I'm kind of on a wait and watch to see what happens.
I saw some school systems are deciding to ban cell phones, and I know that's sort of a controversial thing.
It is, it's tough, you know? There are families that, you know, struggle, struggle with that too, like, they want to be able to get a hold of their child in an emergency or a school-based emergency or an emergency outside of school. And really, what is going to, kind of, what I'm anxious to see is, is for the places that have decided at this stage, right before school starts, to ban their cell phones, how that kind of rolls out, you know, throughout the year. So, you know, we'll give it, we'll give it a little bit of time, the district will decide what they would like to do, because for anything like that to be successful, you have to have a very strong communication plan surrounding that.
It is really hard, but even in the high school and the passing time and the cafeteria, you know, I had, I had a personal experience that was very challenging with a cell phone and one of my children, and so even during that time, it is, it's very, very hard to control, and there's very challenging things that are happening for the students that I think are very distracting.
I don't disagree. I have two teenage children myself, right? And it is a struggle, whether you're in school or out of school, to try to break the habit of constantly kind of checking your phone. So I understand one thousand percent, as a parent and as an educator, the rationale behind all of this. It really just is going to come down to how, what you're doing, how you're doing it, how it's enforced, and what your communication is. On a side note, I was out Friday night with my family, and we went to a show, and they had you lock your cell phone and your smartwatch into one of those little fabric bags. It was a condition of, you knew when you bought the ticket that you weren't going to be able to do that, and so of course, I took pictures of it just in case we ever need it, and it really was fascinating and nice not to have that draw of checking what time it is or whatever, you could just relax. And so, you know, I don't know, I can see both sides to it, but it'll be interesting nonetheless, as I digress into this whole story.
No, that's great. Thank you so much.
So I just have a quick update, if I may. This is for the board and for the public who may be watching. We have two business days before school starts, and I will say, my office becomes incredibly busy this time of year with registrations. We registered twenty-seven kids today. So if anyone's out there waiting to bring their last pieces of paperwork, please, please, bring it in tomorrow, because we're getting to that point, just for clarity and transparency, that if we don't have all of the things necessary, your child may not be able to start school on the first day of school. So we currently have approximately fifty families still in our enrollment school, meaning they're missing pieces, and while I can't thank enough the two ladies in my office, Mrs. Roestabeel and Mrs. Jean Barasa-Zehoff, and our translator Vicente, who has been constantly working on calling families personally to say, we need this piece of residency or this transcript, release of records. We are getting down to the wire where we want your children in school on the first day of school, so please kind of keep that in mind. Central office is open seven thirty to around four thirty every day for registration purposes, so please come down and, or call if you have a question. And we're good.
Perfect, thank you so much. And speaking about the first day of school, I know this isn't on our agenda, but before I move to the announcements, I'll just remind everyone that we have our district-wide meet and greet on Wednesday from one thirty to three. I know that this is a very exciting topic in my household, so I figured I would just mention it because our students are very excited to meet their upcoming teachers. Thank you so much for all of those updates and for all of the hard work that is being done across the district to make sure that we are ready and putting our most beautiful lawns forward to start the school year. Sure, Mr. Vado.
I would just like to make a comment. I'm not sure if it'll come out the way I wanted to, but, you know, we, we talk about all the things that need to be done in our schools. We did that study and all the stuff that has to be done in each school, but tonight proves or shows how it's so difficult to get those things that we know need to be done in the future, when all these other little things pop up, and that's so little, they're expensive. Look at, you know, the pool and everything else that comes up that we don't expect, and that's where we have to spend our money first. And it's, it's so difficult to get some of these things done that we would like to get done in our schools, but other things come up. Our schools are old. Some of the other things are, you know, the land, the fields, and then we have to worry about the elements, you know, all this rain we've had. They all cause trouble, and we have to spend money where we weren't spending, planning on spending money. Boiler is perfect example. So anyway, I just thought I'd say that, and again, thank Mark for all the work that you do to try to save us money here and there. Okay, thank you. Okay? Thank you.
Moving to item number 16 on our agenda, these are our announcements. We have an instructional committee meeting at 6:00 PM. This will be via Google Meet. That's on Tuesday, September 3rd, to accommodate for the holiday. And we also have an operations committee, again, at 6:00 PM via Google Meet. That is on Monday, September 9th. We will be back here for our monthly board meeting here at Town Hall. That'll be on Monday, September 23rd, and that time is at 6:30 PM. And with nothing else to come before this board, I would like to call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.